Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the October 4th, 2011 meeting of the Glendale City Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Council members Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Friedman. Here. Tonight's flag salute is going to be led by Councilmember Quintero.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by Reverend Skip Lindeman of the Lockenada Congregational Church.
Let us pray. Oh God, we ask your blessing on our meeting this evening. Let all be done with decency and in order. As we do the people's business, let us treat one another with respect and let us be as fair and honest as we know how to be. Thank you, God, for this great privilege. Let each of us be your faithful servant in all that we do. Amen.
Thank you. Can we hear your report, please?
Agenda for the October 4th, 2011 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, September 29, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item is the agenda preview. Ms. Beers.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. For October 11th, for the Glendale Housing Authority, we have one business agenda item. Director of Community Services and Parks. This is regarding the current status of Glendale's homeless continuum of care. That afternoon, we have no business agenda items for the Glendale Redevelopment Agency. We do have a special meeting of the Glendale City Council. This is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, and this is regarding the water rate restructuring. That evening at 6:00 PM, for the City Council meeting, we have a number of consent items. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is regarding the Chromium 6 resin study. Director of Community Services and Parks, regarding appropriation of funds received from the State of California Employment Development Department to provide on-the-job training and employment services for long-term unemployed people for the electronic medical records field. Director of Administrative Services, Finance and Information Services, this is a professional services agreement with Capital Accounting Partners for the citywide cost allocation plan and the information services rate study. Lastly, under consent, we have Director of Public Works. This is regarding the carpet replacement in various city buildings in connection with Spec. Number 3443. We have one item under hearings. Director of Community Development, this is a resolution of necessity for Lot. 22. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And before we move on to our proclamations, we have a special group of visitors from one of our sister cities, from the city of Kimpo. Is there somebody here to introduce our guests?
Alex.
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 Good evening. I just wanted to say thank you for allowing us to be here this evening.
We have about forty employees from the city of Koh-Song that were recently appointed.
My name is Im Sanghee. She's the Director of Tax Administration.
During the visit to the cities in Southern California, she was -- we were able to visit the cities and to get information on the city intricate systems and infrastructures and had a lot of opportunities to interact with other elected city officials. And once again, we'd like to take back what we learned from the city of Glendale and city of Irvine, which was another city they visited earlier today, and try to incorporate it into that third city.
Kimpo and Glendale formally formed a sister-cityhood as of September 30th of last year.
We look towards to a very fruitful relationship between us and a lot of collaboration in culture, arts, and business.
It's great to have a group of employees from our sister city here. Hopefully, you've learned from us and we've learned from you. I would ask the group to stand so that we can show them to the people at home. And I know that Mr. Weaver, Councilmember Weaver, was able to spend some time with you this afternoon.
And.
And Mr. Najarian. Great.
Thank you very much. Ms. Im does have some souvenir that she would like to pass on to the mayor and our council members, if that's okay?
Thank you. And we have some souvenirs as well. Who would like to?
You should all go up there.
Yeah, okay. That's a good idea. We'll all come in.
Mayor, afterwards, we better make sure they get a copy of the tape. Show back home. What are we doing?
Thank you very much. What she's going to be presenting you here is especially handmade, a decorative accessory that goes over a tie for the gentleman. It looks like as such, it's very beautiful, very handmade. It's pretty much made from scratch and it's grown within the city of Kimpo. That's one of the many natural resources that they're known for. So we just wanted to say thank you for inviting us once again and just a little small token of our appreciation.
Okay. All go up there.
Okay.
All go up there. Okay. Thank you. Next item, please.
At 3B is a proclamation designating October 2011 as Cultural Diversity Month.
A well-timed proclamation. This is a proclamation to celebrate the ethnic and cultural heritage of all community members in Glendale. Zizette Mullins is going to introduce some of our representatives from the Sister City programs, who I hope will all say a few words.
Yes, it's my pleasure to introduce the presidents of our three sister cities. We have Armin Kavadecian, our newest member. He's the new president for the Gapan Sister City Association. Oh, he's right behind me. Hi. Mr. Efren Alvarez from the Mexico Sister City and Mr. Alex Wu from our Korean Sister City. And I'm going to turn the mic over to Efren.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman and council members. I have to say that seeing all these persons from Korea is really exciting because it used to be maybe twenty-some years ago, we used to be all the Mexicans coming to do the same thing. So sister cities go through some cycles where there's law movement and then we're going through that at the moment. But nevertheless, over the last 25 years, you guys have always been so supportive of all the programs that we bring to Glendale. And I need to say that I think the Unity Fest event is one of those programs that really brings us all together. I think the only thing I would ask now is that we get to visit Korea and they got to go to Mexico with us and maybe we can drag some of you with us at the same time. But nevertheless, I'm very thankful and I think they should say a couple of words also because we love the programs. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Today is my first day taking the job over. So I really am not really familiar with the program in details. All pretty much I know that Unity Fest is coming up and we're all excited and we're going to have boot the Armenian-Gapan Sister City. And I want to thank the city so far, what I know that they have done, collaborated with the Gapan. Again, I just want to thank you. Hopefully, down the road, we'll have better working relations with each other. Thank you.
As Mayor Friedman stated, it's very appropriate that we have the delegation from Kimpo here tonight in collaboration with Cultural Diversity Month. We just wanted to say, take this opportunity from the Korea-Glendale City Association to thank Mayor Friedman and council members. Councilmember Weaver and Manukian and Najarian graciously spent some time with the delegation and interacted with them and gave them information as to what we're doing from the city of Glendale. And they shared with us as to what they're doing with the city of Kimpo. And we saw that we have a lot of similarities. So we look to having a very fruitful relationship. And I think that this is just the beginning. So once again, thank you. And as the two presidents before me have stated, I think that, you know, the city of Glendale does a great job in sharing in our diversity. And, you know, one event that does that is the Unity Fest, which is coming up. And I think that's going to be a great opportunity for all the cultures to come as one and share and appreciate all our cultural differences and our enrichment. So once again, thank you for this time and have a great evening.
Thank you. And Unity Fest is October 16th, noon to 5:00 on Bram Boulevard. So I hope to see everyone there. Congratulations. I will ask Mr. Quintero to bring this up. Thank you all for coming today. Thank you. Next item.
At 3C is a proclamation designating October 2011 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you. Christine Baboomian, I believe, is going to tell us about Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, members of the council and staff. My name is Christine Baboomian. I'm here on behalf of the Commission on the Status of Women and the staff person. First off, I'd like to thank you for recognizing domestic violence and its importance and bringing awareness to the community. Domestic violence is a disease in our community that affects all races, all ethnicities, genders, and class status. It affects everyone. And just a little bit of history. Domestic Violence Awareness Month started 30 years ago exactly, October 1981. And it was formed by the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence. It started as a day of unity and then it evolved into a week and now it's a month. I'd like to take this time to point out a couple events related to Domestic Violence Awareness Month. One is being held on behalf of the Commission on the Status of Women and the YWCA. It's our annual candlelight vigil. It'll be held on Thursday, October 20th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM at the YWCA. It's a very moving tribute to those who have lost their lives to domestic violence and also to those who have survived and we celebrate with them. One more event I'd just like to mention, it's going to be held in December, but it's really important and it's the first time we're doing something like this. The Commission, who is part of the Safe Families Task Force, which is a coalition here in Glendale to address domestic violence, is holding a training for members of the clergy. And it's going to be held in association with the Glendale Religious Leaders Association. And it's really an opportunity to train members of our clergy about what domestic violence looks like so that when they are approached by their congregation, they know how to respond and what to do. That's going to be held Thursday, December 15th. During the day, it's going to be free. And if anyone has any questions about any of the events or if anyone needs any domestic violence resources in the community, they can call me at 818-548-4844. And again, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. These events are very important and I hope that people who need them, you know, take advantage of that opportunity. Mr. Manukian, would you like to present the proclamation?
Congratulations and thank the women's commission for.
Hey, next item.
3D is a proclamation designating October 2011 as Stop and Think Pink Month.
Thank you. And I believe someone from Glendale Eventus Medical Center is here to talk to us about Think Pink.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Mayor Friedman, for supporting our program, our Stop and Think Pink campaign. And council members, it's very gracious of you to support us continually. We really appreciate it. Stop and Think Pink is an awareness campaign we have created to raise awareness for breast cancer. It is Breast Cancer Month. You'll see pink ribbons in different community businesses supporting our program. You'll see a giant pink ribbon on the side of our building. And basically, we just want to communicate that it is important to raise awareness to this disease. It's one of our highest diagnosed diseases and one of our easiest-treatable diseases. So we want to make sure that we get everybody who has a concern or a problem into Glendale Adventist to get this taken care of. For the month of October, we're offering discounted mammograms, $50, for anyone who wants to come in and get a mammogram or a checkup and all of that sort of a thing. It's going to be used, the money will be used to raise money for our free programs that we have. I am Pamela King. I'm the Positive Image Coordinator at Glendale Adventist Cancer Services. We have an extreme amount of programs that are free for patients. You don't have to be a patient of Glendale Adventist to utilize these services, which is awesome. We do wig fittings. We have cartooning classes, jewelry making. We do makeup, lots of fun things. I think one of the coolest things I'm really proud to talk about is Mayor Friedman has been extremely instrumental in creating our fitness and yoga programs and our dance classes that we offer for the patients for free. So the money that we use bringing in the mammograms will be used to support those programs. So thank you once again for all of your kindness and generosity. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. And I know that the community really appreciates what Glendale Eventus has been doing with providing these free programs for the community. It's really a wonderful, wonderful program. So I will bring you the proclamation. Thank you. I think those programs deserve a round of applause, don't you? Okay, next item, please.
Next is City Council and Staff Comments.
Staff comments? City Council comments? Mr. Najarian.
I received an email just a few moments ago from Cara Sergil, who was before us last week and the week before. And she was unable to attend council in person today, but she asked me to remind everyone and to announce that tomorrow is the International Walk to School Day. And I know that she has coordinated 33 schools who are going to be encouraging their students to walk to school, leave the cars at home. Bikes are okay as well. And the event will go forward, rain or shine. We may have some rain, but that's what umbrellas are for. And it's kind of fun to walk through the rain and splash in the puddles and all that. So thank you, Cara, for all the hard work you've done and all you kids and parents get out and walk to school. It's going to be a lot of fun and even get to spend some quality time in those few moments back and forth to school. So let's break the record. I understand that we may be setting the record for the largest Walk to School Day event participant city tomorrow, Walk to School. I was absent this afternoon because I was on my way back, and that's why I look so tired, actually, on my way back from the annual American Public Transportation Association meeting and expo, which was held in New Orleans. It was a very, and I cut it short, actually, to make it back for the council meeting, but it was a very interesting conference. There were very heated discussions regarding the status of transportation funding at the federal level. There is still a lot, it's not just Congress that is very bitter towards what's going on, but the transportation officials are also back and forth, very concerned. On one hand, extending funding to develop transportation projects. On the other hand, trying to find the funding so that we don't go further into debt. So that debate is continuing from New Orleans all the way to Washington, D.C. I had a chance to speak with the, intimately with the CEO of the MTA and MetroLink. We may have some good news on the Route 201 line through Glen Oaks Canyon. I don't want to jinx it and say that we've got a done deal, but I think safe to say they understand the situation that our residents have in that canyon. And hopefully, I was able to convince them that they are the agency best fitted to bear the expenses in providing transportation to that regard. And speaking of transportation, I know there's been a lot going on. It's been about 30 months since I unveiled my Safe Streets Initiative, which was really a combination of the safe routes to school, both state and federal, as well as MTA funding, as well as research, bringing in the research facilities from UC Berkeley and other universities. So I think it might be appropriate, since there's been a lot of attention, Mr. Zern, if we could sort of get an update, where are we? What goals do we have in terms of funding? I mean, funding seems to be a very big part of it. Where can the MTA come in? How can council, perhaps as a group, encourage the MTA to give us some funding, as well as other agencies as well? And I do see, we do have some funding grants coming up in this consent calendar, but let's see where we are, take a pause, and maybe focus on some areas where we can make some good headway to continue our many years-long effort in making our streets safer for pedestrians, bicyclists, and motor vehicles as well.
I'd be happy to bring something back. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manukian.
Yes. I attended a Vanguardian meeting over the last week, actually. Mr. Allen wasn't there, but Mr. Rick Barnes was moderating it. And the reason why I bring this up is because there was an individual there who talked, and the whole conversation was regarding city processes. There was an individual there who's a facilitator, who pulls permits and does all the running. And this individual talked about how difficult it was working with the city of Glendale. She said, "In the city of Los Angeles, it's very difficult as well, but I can go and have someone make a decision. Within a couple of weeks, I've got my plans approved and I'm moving along." But he said, but, not he, but this individual, said that in the city of Glendale, it takes six months to get the same plans approved. And she described it in this manner. She said, "It's like chasing your tail." So I met with another individual outside of this meeting the past couple of days, and he described, it took him approximately five years to complete the building of his house. And it's still not finished. He's still working on it. And he described the process and the way the employees, some of the employees, not all the employees, addressed him in this manner. They were non-professional, aggressive, and condescending. Now, I met with an individual today who was asking me for Section 8 preference points and what could I do that I could help him. And this is probably maybe the 50th person I'm meeting with over the past couple of months talking about Section 8. And all of them, I've told them that I cannot, I've said, "No, I cannot do anything for And, but I was, I met with them. I had a smile on my face. I told them no with a smile. They accepted it, thanked me. I said, "We'll look into what you have, what you have on your preference points. And if there's any changes in your status, we'll help you fill out the forms." But I said it with a smile, and the staff member that was there said it with a smile. And I appreciate all the help that she gives during these meetings, and they're very difficult meetings. And they moved on. And they were satisfied that I met with them and I told them what to do and how to do it and where to do it with a smile. So I think it's important to relay to our staff that we are here, and I hear this all the time, we're here for the community and the community's not here for us. We need to work for the community. We can say no. We have to say no sometimes, but we have to say it in a professional, pleasant manner and move on and not delay these processes, which are so difficult to get through in our city. So those are my comments today. Thank you.
Mr. Weaver, did you have any comments?
No.
I have a couple of items to talk about. The first is the Glendale Memorial Wine and Roses Event. That was excellent. I'm sure they're raising a lot of money because it seems to be getting bigger and bigger every year. And they went over all of the different things that Glendale Memorial does. It is a community hospital and all of the different things that this particular event funds there at the hospital. And then the second thing I wanted to talk about was I had the opportunity to meet with the veterans that are part of our program there at the Verdugo Job Center. And been wanting to do it for quite a while. Very inspiring. It reminded me of back in the 70s when I was involved in helping to place homeless veterans and so forth. There, met with about 11 of the vets, a couple of women, a woman Marine that had been in about eight years, an Army Ranger, a few other Marines. But the same continuing story for all of them, and that's the multiple deployments that over a period of time, some really started in the reserves, but over a period of time, they wound up basically spending all of their time overseas and came back to no jobs, no employment, and difficulty even making the rent. What this program does is to help with the rent, to help with placement, to get them going on the right track. And let me add, none of these men and women had drug problems or psychological problems or anything else. I mean, they're just struggling coming back to the United States. They have very little cash. Quite a few of them were from Glendale, but others were not originally from Glendale, just sort of wound up here. Because in the woman Marine's case, she heard it was a safe city. So when she was discharged, she, here in the Los Angeles area, she specifically chose Glendale. So it was very inspiring. And the consular who works with them, one of our employees, is just doing a great job. I can tell, just kind of watching them as they interacted and so forth. So it's a very positive program that we started that continues to do well. And I hope we can grow this program because obviously, there's going to be more veterans that are going to be coming here to Glendale, having a tough time making the transition from military to civilian life. Some of them are going to community colleges.
wanting to do it for quite a while. Very inspiring, it reminded me of back in the seventies when I was involved in helping to place homeless veterans and so forth. There, met with about eleven of the vets, a couple of women, a woman Marine that had been in about eight years, an Army Ranger, a few other Marines, but the same continuing story for all of them, and that's the multiple deployments, that over a period of time, some really started in the reserves, but over a period of time, they wound up basically spending all of their time overseas and came back to no jobs, no employment, and difficulty even ma, making the rent. What this program does is to help with the rent, to help with placement, to get them going on the right track. And let me add, none of these men and women had drug problems or psychological problems or anything else. I mean, they're just struggling, coming back to the United States, they have very little cash. Quite a few of them were from Glendale, but others are, were not originally from Glendale, just sort of wound up here, because in the woman Marine's case, she heard it was a safe city, so when she was discharged, she, here in the Los Angeles area, she specifically chose Glendale. So, it was very inspiring, and the counselor who works with them, one of our employees, is just doing a great job, I can tell, just kind of watching them as they interacted and, and so forth. So, it's a very positive program that we started, that continues to do well, and I hope we can grow this program, because obviously there's going to be more veterans that are going to be coming here to Glendale, having a tough time making the transition from military to civilian life. Some of them are going to community colleges, one will soon be transferring to a university, some of the others, of course, they've had to find employment. One or two are security guards while they went to, while they go to college, another one was placed in a machining company there on San Fernando Road, that person will be learning CNC, computer numerical controls, and anyway, it was just a great afternoon, couple of hours, that I got to spend with them, so.
Thank you. So, I'll just mention a few of the events that I went to, to acknowledge the organizers. First, I attended in Long Beach what was called the Los Angeles Bike Summit, and this was a summit, an all-day event, that was put on really for city staff and elected officials all over Southern California. So, even though there were some members of the public there, it was primarily made up of people in the public sector, and it was really amazing to see mayors of cities, city managers, engineering staff, different types of staffers from all over Southern California who were interested in improving their city's bicycle infrastructure. I mean, this isn't something that's just happening in Glendale, this is a movement that's really happening all over Southern California, as people are realizing the terrible effects of inactivity and obesity, as our streets become less safe and more crowded, this is, and, and we become a denser area as well. So, it was really valuable, and a few of our staffers were there as well. I was on a panel for the PLACE grant, which is the grant that we've had for the last two years to come up with the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan. You may remember Colin Bogard, who's been here several times, who was with the LA County Bike Coalition, he's now gone back, he had been here as part of that grant, and I was on a panel with someone who, the person from the county who oversees that grant process, as well as the city of Pomona, who is also doing a lot with bicycle and pedestrian safety in their city, and Charlie Gandy from Long Beach, who's kind of their bikes are. So, it was very interesting to see the continuum of a Long Beach who has really just set the gold standard in California for what can be done, to Pomona, who's kind of just starting out, to Glendale being somewhere in the middle. There are also seminars throughout the day on different facets of engineering, on receiving grants, all that kind of thing. One bit of good news is that the LA County, LA County has received a $10 million a year grant over the next several years to help with public, to help with public health, and so some of that can go towards more bike infrastructure, it can go towards nutrition programs, just a wide variety of programs. So, I was glad that our staff was there to hear that, and hopefully they're home right now writing their grant applications for that money, because I'm sure it's going to be definitely sought after by all of the cities. So, that was a great program. I also attended on Saturday the Armenian-American Chamber of Commerce's Women in Business Awards, they call them their Excellence Awards. They honored several really inspirational women in the community. It was a wonderful event, extremely well-attended, and it was always a pleasure to be there to see women who are involved in business, and medicine, and education, and politics, you know, be honored for their accomplishments. I also attended the Oktoberfest in Montrose, which I'm sure many of you also went to, I think they had, how many thousands of people did they say? Do you remember? A lot, city manager saying, a lot, many thousands of people. It was a very nice event, it raises money for the Chamber of Commerce up in Montrose, and it's a lot of fun, they have a large children's section, they have a carnival, they had lots of different booths, and of course, they had lots of beer and bratwurst. So, congratulations to them on having another successful event. That night, I attended a fundraiser for Glendale Healthy Kids, and for those of you who aren't familiar with this group, it's a really important nonprofit in our community that provides health care, preventative health care, and interventive health care for children in the community who are underinsured or uninsured. They provide nutrition information, dental care, vision care, all sorts of, of important services that are often not provided for children. Something that's interesting is that you are far more likely in this country to have access to health care and insurance if you're over sixty-five than if you're under the age of eighteen. The younger people are now, they are falling more and more into a gap of not being covered by health insurance, which is not only unfortunate, it's very dangerous for them, and Glendale Healthy Kids, for now for eighteen years, has provided that health care for the, for hundreds of Glendale children. So, I wanted to just acknowledge them, their efforts, their sponsors, their board of directors, and the many health care professionals and doctors in the community who donate their time to our kids. On Sunday, the Glendale Historic Society had yet another of their yearly home tours. It was a spectacular tour of, I think it was four houses, private residences in Glendale, Margaret Hammond's nodding, so it was four houses, and also the Brand Library. The houses were unbelievable. I'd seen a lot of them from the outside, but when you get inside them, they're even better. It was wonderful, they had several hundred people, both from inside and outside Glendale, touring the houses, and it's always amazing that the homeowners open their houses up for strangers to go through and, and look at their houses, and it's, it's such a wonderful gesture, and it's fun, and it's educational, and it really gets people out there in their community. So, congratulations to them. Lastly, I also attended the Glendale Memorial Hospital fundraiser, there were about, there had to have been seven hundred people there, six hundred people, so hopefully they raise a lot of money. Mostly, that money that's raised mostly goes to their emergency room, which cares for a lot of uninsured people, so there's always a big lot, loss of what they get from the government to cover that, and what they get from insurance companies, and what they're actually have on hand, so they have to make that up with, with donations. So, congratulations to the organizers of that for another wonderful event. Are there any staff comments? Yes, no? Okay, there is. Okay, I thought, I thought I saw waving in the corner. Okay, we have someone coming in?
Running in.
Running in. Oh, now I see why they were taking a little longer.
Thank you again for having me, my name is Officer Feeley, and I just want to take a quick moment to invite all of you and all the viewers at home.
Now, the camera can't see your guests, so maybe either the camera can pan down, or he can, or on the other, there we go.
And I'm here to invite all of you and all of our viewers at home to our fundraiser, our Glendale Canines in the Park, and that's going to be on October fifteenth, a Saturday, at Verdugo Park from eleven AM to four PM. We're going to have a lot of fun activities for kids and for dogs, there's going to be a low-cost pet vaccination, so you can bring your dogs and cats if they need their vaccinations or microchipping. We're going to have pet adoptions from the Pasadena Humane Society, good music, good food, and live police canine demonstrations also. So, you can see our four-legged partners at work and what they do. It's going to be a lot of good times, and because it's close to Halloween, we're also going to have a costume contest for the pets with first, second, and third prizes. So, bring your dogs, bring your cats, bring them in costume, and you could win a prize. It's going to be a really good time for everybody.
Thanks for coming in.
What's the date again?
What's that?
What date?
It is October fifteenth.
On Saturday?
At Verdugo Park, Saturday from eleven to four PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, to add, I think the duck splashes the same day in the same park at the same time. So, you're sharing the park with two different groups, I don't know where everybody's going to park, but it's going to be one big crowd a day.
That would be a great day to ride your bike to the park, having tried to park there in the past. But they're both really fun events, especially if you have kids, you can't beat either one of those events with kids. Okay, if there are no other staff comments, we'll move on to the next item.
Next item on consent, five is consent items following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. A member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so before motions are proposed.
Mr. Menucha?
I would like to pull B, C, E, H, and I.
And I have a card for five D, so let's pull that one as well. Mr. City Clerk, could you read back the items that we're pulling so that we all know what we're voting on?
B, C, D, E, and H and I.
Okay.
I'll move the rest of the consent.
Which other one did you have, Mayor?
He had, he had said it, five D.
A, F, and G.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes. Okay, first item.
E is Chief of Police Regarding Comprehensive Wellness Program for the Glendale Police Department. B1 is Motion Authorizing Execution of Professional Services Agreement with W Solutions Inc., DBA Wellness Solutions.
Okay.
I, I don't need a report, but I do have questions regarding this item. We, I know we are using approximately $116,000 of, of asset forfeiture funds, however, the wellness program, as I see, the, the purpose is to reduce risk of cardiovascular disease, to encourage employees to improve their physical fitness, and all of that, isn't all of that covered by our health insurance? Why do we have a separate program for?
This is actually preventative, and it, its benefit goes to not just to health insurance, but its benefit goes to reduce your workers' compensation costs. It's a typical kind of program to prevent accidents due to the nature of their work, so you're working on body strengthening and wellness, cardiovascular, to reduce accidents. It's been proven over time that it can have a result.
But these tests and, and the consulting that is done, can, can that be done through their health insurance? Do we have to incur additional costs for it and still get a reduction in the workers' comp?
Well, this, this is more of a structured program with a, is somebody here chief, or Todd, do you want to answer this? It's really more of a proactive structured program, as opposed to sending people for the test, it really, really tracks them, monitors them, and gets them engaged in a, in a preventive maintenance program, so to speak.
Should they be tracking themselves anyway? I mean, I track myself, and I'm not a.
Captain Todd Stokes from the Police Department. Yeah, everybody can track themselves, this program is, is providing in-house to the employees. We have a full-time staff member, not city staff, but from the contractor that's provided through this contract, that provides training, injury prevention seminars, nutritional seminars, things that go above and beyond what the average person would probably do, especially being available in the workplace. It provides comprehensive testing each year, and we maintain, the program administrator maintains those records, so we can see over time how folks are progressing, and we know that a lot of folks won't do this on their own, and, and it's preventative, given the nature of our work in the Police Department, it's really, you know, if we save one or two lives by doing this, it's really worth it.
Actually, if you save one or two back injuries, it'll pay for more than a year's or two costs.
I, I understand, and I know that it's an asset forfeiture fund which does not impact our general funds, it just seemed like a duplication to me as I was reading through it.
They're really different things, and I'll tell you, in communities I've been in, it's not uncommon to pay for these kinds of programs out of your workers' comp fund, because they will show it'll reduce injuries and accidents and, and return multiples in profits. Here, we can use a drug asset forfeiture fund, as a result, we save the workers' comp fund having to pay for that kind of a program.
Thank you. I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes, next item.
Three C is Chief of Police Regarding State of California Office of Traffic Safety Grant Program for Pedestrian Education, Speed, and Distracted Driving Enforcement. C1 is motion accepting the grant in the amount of $200,000. C2 is a resolution appropriating $200,000 in grant funds to fund participation in the program.
I, again, I don't need a report, I certainly am in favor of traffic safety regarding pedestrians, speed, and especially distracted driving enforcement, I think we should have the authority to issue tickets ourselves to, because I run into people all the time who are speaking on their phones.
You mean, you personally issue tickets?
Yes, yes. However, I, in the report, I did notice that it said this $200,000 will pay for the overtime, and my question is, why, why does it take, isn't this part of our enforcement already, and why do we have to, why do we need a grant to pay for overtime for track, traffic enforcement for such, for such infractions?
Carl Povell is captain with the Police Department. What this does is it really allows us to supplement our existing resources. The way the Office of Traffic Safety works is it does not pay for full-time personnel, but it will provide grants on a competitive basis to allow us to help to address problems, distracted driving and speed are two of the, the larger problems in the, in the city of Glendale, and so we go out and compete for these grants, and they've funded us to the tune of $200,000 for this, for this coming year, but they will only fund it on an overtime basis. So, what we do is we use this to supplement our existing enforcement structure. So, if, if you can look at it this way, it actually frees up our existing resources to continue working and gives us the ability to provide some extra enforcement that normally would not be there.
But it's not, it's not all overtime, though, is it?
Yes, it is.
It's all overtime?
It's overtime, funded completely by the grant.
Okay. Next question that comes to mind is, do we need to appropriate, appropriate additional funds for this enforcement?
No.
Do we have sufficient funds allocated to manage this aspect of our, of our traffic enforcement?
Yes, once you, if, assuming council approves the grant, this is a reimbursement grant, so as we spend the money, up to that $200,000 mark, the money is reimbursed to us for that, for those expenditures.
The, the resolution you have actually does appropriate the grant money, so one action, you're receiving the money, the other action, you're appropriating it so they can spend it, reimburse the city.
Thank you, I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes, next item.
Five D is Director of Community Services and Parks Regarding Proposed Grant Application to the California River, River Parkway's Grant Program for Funds for Phase Two of the Glendale Narrows Riverwalk Project. He wins a resolution authorizing submittal of grant application.
Okay, let me just call the speaker, I don't think we need a presentation right now. Mike Mohill?
Good evening, Mayor Mike Mohill, Glen Oaks Canyon resident, thirty-three years. I'm very happy to see this program. Anything dealing with parks makes me very happy, and this is one of those type of parks, so I know we're all going to approve it tonight, but I just want to give a cheer for it. Thank you.
You. Is there any discussion?
About five D one.
Good, Weaver, roll call.
Councilmembers Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes, next item.
Five E is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding Request for Proposals for the Low Transport Salvage, Recycle, and or Disposal of the Obsolete Electrical Equipment No Longer Useful to GWP. He won his motion awarding a one-year contract to Environmental Management System Inc., including two one-year extension options.
I, again, I don't need a report, and as I was going through the list of the items that are recycled, I did not see the meters that were replaced, I know, how many meters did we replace with smart meters? What are we doing with the old meters? Are we recycling them, selling them?
They're done in, in a different way, these, this equipment is.
I didn't see it in the, it said, equipment, so I didn't see it in here.
It's not part of this one, that's correct, it's.
But what are we doing with the other stuff?
They're actually scrapped, but they have no value because of their age.
Okay. Are we recycling them?
Oh, yeah, we recycle them, but there's no value, unfortunately, yes.
Aren't there metals and stuff?
But I mean, this is a very different, this has to do with transform, primarily transformers and oil.
I saw that, yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes, next item, please.
Five H is Director of Libraries Regarding Appropriation of Grant Funds Awarded at the Glendale Public Library for Various Library Services, Including the Literacy Program and the Local History Digital Resource Project. H1 is a resolution appropriating $14,676 in grant funds for the various library services.
Well, this item, I pulled again, this, the reason why I pulled this item, because it's an important item, and I think the community needs to know about it, and there are two grants that are, that are, that are being, two pots of money that are being received, one is for digitizing some of the resources, the other one is for English literacy, and that's what interests me, and I wanted to tell the public about that, if there's someone here who can give us a brief description of what that is.
Hello, I'm Jay Wallenhopden. Jay Wallenhopden, I'm the executive analyst for the library, Cindy clearly couldn't be here tonight. The literacy program that this grant is for, this is actually a reimbursement grant we get from the California Department of Education to reimburse us for some of our literacy services. This is sort of a, sort of a pilot project that the state did with the Department of Education to see how scores of people that went into our program were affected, so they were scored at the beginning of the grant and at the end of the grant period, and we participated in this, and so the literacy program is funding us for those services that were programmed.
There's, there's approximately 10,000 being allocated, and it says, "The adult literacy program matches tutors and students on a one-to-one basis, using student-centered curriculum," and how is that done? If, let's say, a community member is interested in such a program, what would they have to do to be matched with a, with a tutor? do to be matched with a tutor?
All of our tutors that are participating in the program are actually volunteers.
Okay.
So they would come to the Glendale Library and let our literacy program know that they were interested in volunteering.
So they would go to the library to apply?
Yes.
So any library would do?
Well, our literacy program is at the Central Library, so they can come to the Central Library and they'll be directed to the literacy program.
Okay, Central Library is on Louise and Harvard?
That's the Central Harvard.
So if anyone's interested in adult literacy program, they would have to go to the Central Library to sign up and get a matching tutor for their English literacy. And what does English literacy mean for the public?
English literacy, there's sort of a distinction between English, there's a second language in English literacy. English literacy is teaching people who already speak English to read English.
Okay.
And then ESL is people that, you know, learning how to read.
They're both important programs.
Both very important programs. This one was specifically for teaching people that speak English to read English.
Okay, I think it's a great program. I think we should do more of these, the more grants we get to help people. And there's considerable number of people in our community who do speak English, but their reading and writing is not as where it should be, where they can deal with city processes and technical issues and stuff. And I think this is a great, great program, so I'll move the item. Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Council members Menuchaian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes, next item.
Next item, at 5I is Director of Community Services and Parks and Chief of Police Regarding Recommendation to Approve the Glendale YMCA as a New Project Sponsor for the Glendale Police Activities League PAL Program. At I1 is a motion approving the new project sponsor and transferring $13,788 in fiscal year 2011/12 CDBG PAL Program Funds to the Glendale YMCA.
This is, again, I pulled this, this is one of Mr. Quintero's favorite programs and mine. The PAL Program, I think it's a great program. I would like to thank the YMCA. I know the representative was here. I know during our budget cuts, this was on the chopping block and due to the efforts of the City Council, it remained. I think it's a great program for young kids to get busy after school. I've been through the program, not the Glendale program, but in my younger days, I went to a program such as this. I think it's a great program and the location we had before was not that appealing when I went and visited it. Although the kids that were there, they were very enthusiastic and they were gung ho about the program. I haven't seen the location at YMCA. I hope that the location at YMCA is a little more open and more available to the kids for, so that they can kind of stretch their arms. So when they're, you know, boxing, they don't box the guy under ropes, so they don't hit the guy under rope. So I think it's a great program. I just want to publicize the fact that it's going to be at the YMCA now. It's still, however, still, the Police Department is involved, right? Okay. So I just wanted to say that it's a great program.
Mr. Quintero? Yeah, I also want to thank the YMCA and the Executive Director for stepping up and the Police Department, Captain Povolitis included. There was a lot of different hoops that had to be jumped over, but to get this to work. And I'm very enthusiastic. The new location's just great. I can't think of a better location. I actually saw, I just can't remember where, but on one of the cable networks, a couple of different reports and one in particular, one young girl who sort of started in a PAL program, there's going to be boxing at the Olympics. And this particular young girl from Texas, looks like she's going to represent the U.S. in one of the lighter weights, featherweight, I think it was. But this is just a great program. More and more of the young kids that I've known throughout the years have gone on to community colleges, then UCLA, some have become professional boxers. One of them, after going through the program in UCLA, became a world champion. He's now going to law school. And I'm convinced it's because of the discipline that goes along with boxing and the discipline of hanging out with cops that are always there to make sure you head in the right direction. So it's very exciting and hopefully, I'll start with Mr. Weaver, put the gloves on with him, and then I'll move on to Mr. Menuchaian and then Mr. Najarian. So that's what, those are my aspirations for this program.
Thanks for leaving me off that list.
Don't hold your...
Put some weight on, Frank.
That's an interesting story, Mr. Quintero, because as far as I know, our program doesn't allow girls, so maybe that's something that we can reconsider, should a girl want to sign up. I'm not saying we should go out and recruit them necessarily, but I...
Does it girls?
It does allow girls now? Okay. I was glad, do you have any girls?
There were some, yes.
Okay, good to know.
So 14,000 is certainly a small amount, but you should allocate probably $28,000. But for now, I'll take this and I'll move the item.
I'll second and also let me include Moises Carrillo from the CDBG Block Grant Section who also jumped through the hoops and made sure the Police Department did what needed to be done. Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Council members Menuchaian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes, next item.
Next is Oral Communications portion reserved for three-minute announcements related to community-wide announcements. We will have the full oral communications at the conclusion of all the city business.
Thank you. I have two cards, Stella Bagdaserian followed by Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, honorable council members and staff. My name is Dr. Stella Bagdaserian and this year, Dr. Rostamian and I will be the Chairs of Armenian Bone Marrow Registry Walk of Life Walkathon. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to all of you for a few minutes regarding a topic that affects us at some point in our lives, cancer, being directly or someone that we know of. The type of cancer that our organization deals with is leukemia or blood cancer. Each year, more than 30,000 patients are diagnosed with leukemia, aplastic anemia and other life-threatening blood diseases. For many, their only chance of survival is to have a stem cell bone marrow transplant from a compatible donor. Only 30% of the patients can find a match within their family members. The rest of the 70% have to find their matches among unrelated existing registries. For a minority group such as Hispanics, Armenians, Jews, the percentage is higher because there are less minority donors registered in marrow registry. To address this problem, nearly 10 years ago in 2001, we established the Armenian Bone Marrow Donor Registry, a nonprofit independent organization. The mission of our organization is to find that compatible match donor for all patients, Armenian and non-Armenians, who are suffering from blood-related diseases. And their last hope of survival is to have a bone marrow or stem cell transplant from genetically matched compatible donor. Since that time, the ABMDR has recruited over 20,000 donors, received and processed over 1,500 patient referrals, identified 1,200 potential matches and facilitated 11 bone marrow/stem cell transplants in Armenia, the United States and Europe. We're a full member of World Marrow Donor Worldwide and cooperative member of American National Donor Program, expanding our scope to help more patients in need. Through our yearly outreach program, such as Walkathon, we're trying to raise awareness within Glendale community, encouraging community members to participate in this life-saving cause. This year will be our sixth annual Walk for Life on October 22nd, which will start in Glendale Memorial Hospital and will end in Verdugo Park. Like last year, we'll have gathering, music, food. So we would like to invite the city council members to join us on that walk. Thank you for your time and we also have a three-second, I think, commercial, would like that to be run.
What time does it start?
Well, the registration starts at 7:30. The walk starts at 8:30.
7:30 in the morning?
Yes.
On Saturday?
We'll have coffee and muffins.
Saturday.
It's for a good cause. Very good cause and it's a good exercise.
7:30 to 8:30, so you could come towards 8:30.
Okay, do we have your tape to run?
Why do I walk? Because it's fun.
It's healthy!
Because we care!
I walk for the future.
I walk for my stepmother.
My friends.
My brother.
My aunt.
My son.
For tomorrow's care.
I walk to save a life.
The Walk of Life benefits the Armenian Bone Marrow Donor Registry.
It helps people like me.
Like me.
And me.
And me!
Save an Armenian life.
Save an Armenian life!
Ever wanted to be a hero? It's as easy as taking a walk. Join us.
You were very well, you were represented very well in that video. Yeah.
Thank you. You know, one of the reasons that I feel passionately about this, and since they started, I don't usually make comments in the middle, but I did have a friend that I met through being diagnosed with breast cancer, who was a young mother in her twenties, who had two small children, who got leukemia, it's a secondary cancer, after receiving chemotherapy for breast cancer. And she was Latino and because she was from a minority that, like you said, was underrepresented in terms of donors, she never found that match. She waited for a year and then she died. So it's very important that people of all ethnicities, if you're able, register to be a bone marrow donor. It's very non-invasive these days. It is. It's not a big surgery. It's very easy and you could save somebody's life. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Leon Mayer's my last card.
Good evening, Mayor Freeman, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm here on behalf of the friends at the library and also for the library itself. Now, we just finished a couple of events this past month featuring famous authors. One was the professor from Pepperdine, who is a national authority on the Mideast. And just Sunday, the Armenian Chamber of Commerce, in conjunction with the library, we had Peter Thompson, who is internationally known, has written a book about the wars of Pakistan, going back to the Mujahideen and all the things that happened with the Pakistani ISI. It was tremendous program. Your father was there, Mr. Najarian. Yes, your doctor, father. Any event, we're having another event on the 26th of October, which is a little different. And we believe in bringing different things for different people. And this event is Big John McCarthy, who's going to talk about the ultimate fighting contest, the UFC and mixed martial arts. And he's refereed 500 bouts, so to speak. He's a 22-year veteran of the LAPD. They call him Big John McCarthy because he's big and he's strong and everybody respects him when he referees these mixed martial art bouts. And he has nursed the UFC from the beginning to where it is now. It used to be nothing, now it's big on TV and in the sports world. So we urge people who have kids in the various Kung Fu and karate clubs and things like that, think about coming to this event. It could be very interesting to you and we hope you can make it. Now, as far as, he's written a book and the book will be for sale and that should be a very interesting event for everybody. He's refereed 500 bouts. Think about it, 500 bouts. He's been in the ring there. Now, real quickly, the friends is having a furniture and book sale at the library, the loading dock in the rear of the library on the 22nd and the 23rd. It's not just for the friends, but it's for the public. It's for the public 10 o'clock Saturday, 10 o'clock Sunday, the 22nd and 23rd. Everybody's welcome to come and get a bargain on books and furniture. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next item?
Under Action Items, at 8A is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power and Director of Information Services regarding Professional Services to Implement the Portal Technology for GWP Smart Grid Website. At 8A1 is a motion authorizing execution of a professional services agreement with Cherry Road Technologies, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $187,880, including contingency.
Thank you, Mr. Steiger or Mr. Fraga.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Ed Fraga, Director of Information Services. The item before you is to fully utilize the capability that council approved last March for portal technology for the GWP and for smart grid specifically. This would enable us to acquire a consultant through competitive bid that would pull together the four different sources of information for customers, for customers of GWP, and enable them to use one log-on and access all of their particular information through that means. So we're requesting that council approve that item.
Menuchaian?
I see that this technology that we purchased is part of Oracle PeopleSoft?
Yes.
And we've had considerable amount of problems with PeopleSoft before Oracle purchased them, but is this a reliable technology and since I was not here in March?
Yes.
Can we rely on this to provide the information that the public needs as opposed to going through 10 years of tests and trials and then saying, oh, we're implementing it next month?
Good question. Councilman Menuchaian, the difficulties that we had with PeopleSoft were actually some years ago and they largely had to do with the city adapting to a enterprise resource planning system. We attempted early on to do things more the way that Glendale does them rather than the way that the software was designed and that created a lot of problems. Those have been undone and corrected over the years and so in the past, I've only been here two and a half years, but I'm told, and I know about the last two and a half years, we've had virtually no problems. That has run very, very well. And I'm told that before that, that was the case as well. So we don't anticipate problems with the software per se.
How long will it take for us to implement the system?
We...
I want to have that on record so that if anything happens, we know. If it's two months, six months, a year, let's make it public so that...
Actually, I looked at that and if it's going to be on record, let me look at that. We're looking at February, March...
Of 2012?
Yes.
So about six months to implement the project. Is this a new software that is being written or it's an available software that will be customized to fit our needs?
Yeah, it's available software. This is software that's been used, the software we already acquired in March is the software we're talking about. It's been used by many different organizations around the world.
Okay, so it's not something new that we're implementing?
That's correct. Now, what this is, is a consultant who has experience specifically in that and experience specifically in public sector.
And there were only two companies that bid for this project. Why is that?
I'm not sure. We put it out, sometimes we get as many as four or five, on occasion we get only two. They were both valid proposals, both good proposals. These were both platinum level certified by Oracle Corporation, which owns PeopleSoft, so well-qualified. This vendor in particular has done a great deal of work in the public sector, including our neighbor here, the city of Pasadena.
Okay, and we are not today determining the issue of additional funds for the smart meters, the $10 million additional? Is that...
No, that is simply giving you a running total of where we are on those available funds.
All right, so this motion does not address that issue at all?
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay, I do have a card. Did Mr. Najarian have a question?
I just have two brief questions. With regard to the fund balance of 10 and a half million, is that in line with our projected budgetary expenditures?
I should probably let Glenn answer that question. It's his money.
Yes, that's in line and given the projection of where on, we'll come in underneath that.
My second question is with regard to the announced operational... My second question is with regard to the announced operational date of this, February, March. Does that take into account any lawsuits, or any sort of civil disobedience that may arise from these, in implementation of these?
We're not anticipating any lawsuits, or...
Oh, you're not? Okay. But that would slow it down, then?
That certainly would.
I would say if there was an injunction in place, let's say by an outside consumer group, that would
Oh, absolutely.
stop our progress at that point.
Okay, I have one card, Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mayor Freeman, council members. My name is Mike Mohill, 33-year resident of Glendale, Glen Oaks Canyon. I'm coming before you tonight because I had another phone call a couple of days ago from a neighbor. He called and said to me, "My mother does not want these smart meters. They're right outside our kitchen window." His mother called me last month, and I referred her to Councilman Tmanukian. She says to me, "How come Mrs. Freeman approved this, and she's a cancer survivor?" And right here on our report, it says, "World Health Organization has just classified the type of radiation emitted from smart meters as Class IIb carcinogens, on par with DDT. Would you, ladies and gentlemen, want DDT sprayed in and around your home, schools, and neighborhood? How do you answer this woman, and all the other neighbors, who are concerned about their health, Mayor? Meters are making people sick, causing earrings, headaches, heart problems, insomnia. We have major health issues, and you're being, we're being sold a bill of goods." I remembered being upset here about a month or two ago, and I said, "You know what? I don't mind paying my council members $8,000 a year," I think it was at the time, "if you all read the documents." And I asked you all, "Did you read the documents on these smart meters?" And I asked each one of you. And when I went to you, Mayor, you said you read the document, and I said, "And you approved it in 2009?" And you shook your head, and you said, "No." I went to the minutes, and ma'am, you did approve these minutes. You did approve meters. How could you approve meters, when you're a cancer survivor? How do you answer the people in the community, who call me all the time? "Mr. Mohill, please talk to the council people. They won't listen to me." We have health issues, they've never been answered. We got a $70 million bill. With $70 million, we're going to have a PAL program, more parks, libraries, schools, soccer fields, every wish list, you've been telling the public, "We have no money." We could have public park, we could have public transportation, we could have a B-line, a C-line, every line you want. But you want to spend $70 million on a system that was never broken. Never, never broken. But somebody said, "Ah, by having smart meters, we can get the money in quicker. Raise my water rates, and raise my electric rates. And have another bond for $70 million, which was never, never necessary." Who speaks for the people? My name is Mike Mohill, concerned citizen of Glendale.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Mr. Cantrell?
It didn't take long to go way over on the other side. You know, if you're complaining about the price, and the cost, whatever, but when you start talking at that podium, that there is a outbreak of insomnia, and cancer, et cetera, et cetera, related to these smart meters, you know, that's just a flight of fantasy, because that's absolutely, you know, like I say, he's just making it up as he goes along. He's complaining about the cost, and all the other issues he complains about, that's certainly his right, but don't tell me that we have this outbreak of cancer, et cetera, et cetera. It's just ridiculous.
Madam Mayor, would you like...
Najarian, did you, Mr. Najarian had his hand.
I just want to point out an inconsistency in Mr. Mohill's arguments. He stated that, "Were we not to spend this money on the smart meters, then we could use it for the B-line, the parks, the libraries, the PAL program." And that in and of itself implies a transfer from the electric utility to the general fund, so now I'm really confused as to where he is on the transfer issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to move 8A1, if everybody's finished talking.
Mr. Tmanukian?
I would be voting for this item, and I believe that, I am opposed to the smart meters, however, I would be, I would not be doing justice to this community if I did not go through and approve the items that would make this technology work. I am opposed to technology, however, we do have to allocate the funds to give staff the ability to implement it, otherwise, we're undermining this community. And regarding Mr. Mohill's comments, I did not feel comfortable when you made those comments to the mayor. I believe that whenever individuals come up here, you can agree or disagree on an issue, and that's fine, but I strongly feel that we should keep it away from personal items, personal issues. And I did not like those comments, even though I agree with you in principle, in terms of the smart meters. So, I will be voting for the item.
I concur in your comments, Mr. Tmanukian. They were out of place.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Hey, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Tmanukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Montero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Freeman?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is a hearing, and at 9A is Director of Community Development regarding standards pertaining to non-conforming accessory ground signs in Chapter 30.33 of Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code. 9A1 is a motion providing direction of staff on council-selected alternatives to refer to the Planning Commission for a review and recommendation.
Okay.
Mayor Freeman, members of council, this particular agenda item...
Are you going to state your name for the record?
Wolfgang Kraus, Principal Planner. This particular agenda item involving non-conforming ground signs was part of the larger package of code amendments that you saw a couple of months ago. A lot of minor changes, and some more significant topics, such as the artificial turf. You adopted most of those changes, but because you wanted a little bit more information, and to see some photographic examples, it was decided we would come back at a later date. So, here we are. We provided a little more information on this topic than we had in the original staff report, so hopefully, we've answered some of those questions. The signs that we're talking about are only in C1, C2, and DSP East Broadway districts that were made non-conforming, because those zones had been changed. It's not because we changed the sign regulations, but because we changed the zones, and those zoning districts had different standards for freestanding ground signs. C1 and C2 changes took place in 1986, and the DSP is more recent. That was part of the south, I mean, the downtown specific plan, so that's only a couple of years old. All of these signs were legal at one time, when they were in the, usually in the C3 zone, there might have been a couple in the CM zone. And then, for a while, from '86 to 2000, we did allow face changes on those non-conforming ground signs, as we'd just gone through this significant amortization program before that, and we were no longer interested in doing that again in '86. But at the time, we didn't allow ground signs at all in the C1 and C2 zones, so that was the primary reason that we allowed the changes. Ultimately, we thought, over time, these signs would disappear as businesses upgraded and changed. In 2000...
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Were there businesses that removed their signs because of the change in ordinance?
We...
Maybe when they changed businesses, did they remove the sign because they knew they couldn't replace it?
I'm sure they did. I'm not familiar with specific examples, but yes, there were some. And, of course, during the period between '73 and '85, there were hundreds of signs that were altered or removed as a result of the changes in the standards, and then the amortization schedule, the 10-year amortization schedule that we had. So, this is something that came up on a regular basis between '73 and '83. Now, in 2000, we changed the sign regulations, and one of the things we did was to now allow ground signs in the C1 and C2 zones, mostly monument-style, you can tell by the height limits. So, with that additional flexibility, it was proposed to eliminate that clause that said you could change the, basically change the sign face. And that happened. So, for the last 11 years, these leftover ground signs from a different era have been subject to that regulation. So, we've had some signs modified, some signs removed, and what we have left are the signs that you see today. We've got, we originally thought there were about 30. We did a very quick survey a long time ago, and we did a more careful survey recently, and there's about 60 of them now. Most of them legal, non-conforming, some of them illegal, because they've already changed the faces without a permit, or they've, they no longer relate to a business that's on the property. We have the slideshow, these are the same photos that you have in your packet, and we can go through those. I would like to mention that there was a question about service stations the last time. Service stations, or gas stations, do have different ground sign standards than the typical business, or, so they're allowed a little bit taller signs in C1 and C2 zones. There's also something called a shopping center ground sign. There's only a couple of those in the whole town. Those are different. And there are a number of variance cases, so some of the ground signs you see out there in the real world are subject to variances, so they're not, these rules don't apply.
But to be clear, some of the pictures, then, in the packet, those wouldn't be affected by this? Or are these the ones that would be?
These are the ones that would, as far as we know, would be affected. We weren't able to do research on each and every one of them. There's at least one in here that I know is subject to it. The whole, the whole business is actually in the R1 zone, but we didn't realize that until just recently, so it's, the ones that have variances, we tried to exclude from your photo sample, but there are some out there, some of them fairly substantial-looking ground signs, some of them are modest, that have variances, so none of this applies. We can go into more detail. Again, this was discussed at the Planning Commission level. They did recommend no change to the existing ordinance, so over time, the signs would have to conform. Some of them are too large, they're all too tall, you can tell by the height limits of six feet and eight feet that we have.
But are we currently enforcing on some of these signs?
My understanding, I don't know this, but I know there are a couple of cases that Neighborhood Services has been working on, yes.
Is that because of changes?
Right. Or blank face, or no, a missing sign face. I know there's at least two of those, one on Glen Oaks, one on Honolulu.
Jiragani?
Yes, Neighborhood Services, in fact, has been waiting, because I asked Neighborhood Services, when we put this, this item on the list of the zoning code amendments, to stop enforcing on, unless there are new signs in the making, stop enforcing on the existing signs, so that the council would have the option of reviewing this policy, and reconsider this policy. And if I may add, one thing that Mr. Kraus said, during the Planning Commission hearing on this item, I think staff reported something, and then around 30 signs, because at the time, we had done a windshield survey, but since the last council meeting until now, staff has confirmed that there are in fact more, about 60, and that's the discrepancy between what the Planning Commission knew in terms of numbers. We don't know whether or not that would have had a bearing on their recommendation, but I thought it would be important to point that out.
Yes, the second survey had two planners, one vehicle, a winning formula. The first one, we just had one person go out there, very quick. I did want to mention that we do have two alternatives involving, going back to allowing face changes. One is for an unlimited period of time, and one is for a time period of approximately five years. The way I've drafted the language in the code, if you do choose one of those options, if it's introduced today, and I don't, will be, I'd like to work with Mr. Garcia on changing the language a little bit, because the way it's drafted, it applies to legal, non-conforming signs. Some of these are no longer legal, non-conforming, so if...
What are they, if they're not legal?
They're illegal, because they've been changed without a permit.
But, if I may, Madam Mayor, how can they be illegal if they're grandfather, if they've been there for 25 years?
Well, it's the fact that they can continue, but they can't be modified. The current standards, because they don't meet current standards, they can't be modified. Some of them have been modified, so that no longer puts them in the legal, non-conforming category. So, I'm assuming that if you want to go in that direction, you want this to apply to those signs that are still there, so...
If I may, to explain, to maintain your legal, non-conforming status, you can sometimes repair and maintain, but the second you modify, you lose the non-conformant status.
What does modify mean? If a new business comes in, changes the face, that's modification?
That's modification, right.
Because they were trying to get rid of these signs, so a lot of businesses did. They took them down and put up new signs that conform. These are the businesses that either didn't, or just ignored the rule.
Or the rule, some innocently, some not so much, I guess. Sign company, I mean, we've required sign permits for face changes to signs, for all signs, since at least 1973, so these are generally larger signs, that are, changes are made by sign companies. You should be well aware of our regulations after all these years.
Garcia, did you say something?
Oh, I was just gonna, sometimes there's an existing business that wishes to change a sign for business reason, or maybe their standards have changed, if it's a corporate entity, even in that case, it still would trigger the provision that's a modification, so...
Yes, that's correct. Is Virgil's sign in these pictures?
Variance.
Do they have a variance?
Yes, they do.
And is that an option for some of these, or how many of these, would there be an option for them to apply for a variance?
All of them, theoretically. I can recall one case on West Glen Oaks that was one of these years ago, and I, it might have even, not sure if it was, no, I think it was more recently, they, they got a variance to modify their sign.
What would they have to, what kind of findings would they have to make to receive a variance?
Well, the classic one is that it has to be unique, it has to be different, something that wasn't anticipated.
All of them are unique, except McDonald's.
The uniqueness needs to have to do with the uniqueness of the property that puts that property in a disparity compared to other property in the same vicinity, in the same zone, that the absolute, the strict implementation of the code would put them at a disadvantage, and by allowing the variance, you will not, they will not get it.
None of them will qualify.
That's right.
Come on. Let's all be, let's all be real. None of them will qualify. How much does it cost to do a variance?
I, what are we up to, six, eight?
Well, they said that some of them have gotten variances, so there must be some...
Most of them, most of them many years ago.
How much is a variance? No, it's more?
It's, 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 it's three or $4,000 at this point.
Three or $4,000?
Correct.
Laughing again.
Yeah. Again, I want to make sure that if one of these options is introduced, I get a chance to work with Mr. Garcia on the language.
You will. Actually, Madam Mayor, if I may, one, I'm not sure if you opened the hearing, but, so if you haven't, you could, but two, with respect to that, the item is to, is a motion to recommend one of these alternatives. If you don't want to change, if you do want to change within the code currently, so that would actually have to go back to the Planning Commission anyway, because what the Planning Commission did is just essentially say, "We agree with this existing code provision." If we're going to actually change the code, the Planning Commission needs to see what's being proposed, and make a recommendation on that.
Okay, so I'm going to open the public hearing. I do have cards, but let's finish with questions from council.
I did want to clarify, though, that that alternative was presented to the Planning Commission.
Which alternative?
The one of being allowed to change the sign faces. So, they already considered that, and so I don't know why it would have to go back to the Planning Commission, because they...
Why do you have to go back to...
Let me talk with them while the hearing is going on, because my understanding is they didn't actually see the language. They only were presented with the option of changing in the code, or not changing the code, and they didn't actually see the language that was...
Well, if we make a decision, why do you need to go back to Planning Commission?
Because the code requires that changes to municipal code, zoning code, excuse me, go to the Planning Commission for a review and recommendation. They weighed in on the general policy, but they didn't weigh on which alternative to go to. But let me talk to staff while the hearing is going on, and see... But let me talk to staff while the hearing is going on and see exactly what. My understanding was-
You're burying us in bureaucratic mumbo jumbo, basically, going back and forth between the Commission and the council. The council is the policymaker, basically.
And I understand that, and I totally agree, but once you set the policy, Planning Commission has to weigh in on the change to the link.
Can the Planning Commission override the decision we make here?
No. And that's, that would, that would be, if the council wanted to make a change, that would be the direction back to the Planning Commission, is that they want to make a change, here's, here are the ranges of what the council suggests, or here's what they wanted, and what does Planning Commission think. So, but let me, let me talk to staff while you are-
Listening to public input.
Mr. Najarian?
Let me just make sure I understand the, the current situation. There is a, a hold on the enforcement. Is that what you, were you in-
On the enforcement, on the existing non-conforming signs, not the enforcement on any new signs that may be in the making.
So on the existing non-conforming, let's say that the sign has been there for a long time, and there's been no changes to it, that remains in a legal, non-conforming. There are those that are illegal, that have changed their sign face without a permit, or without a variance or anything of that regard. If we maintain the status quo, what would you, what would your intentions be? Would you be then going after the ones that are illegal and weeding them out? Because the not, legal, non-conforming remain legal, non-conforming.
If you come up with a new policy, maintain the existing policy that the faces cannot be changed, then those that change the faces illegally, we would have to do code enforcement on.
The other option that you gave, Mr. Kraus, is a time period, you said five years, with which changes could be made.
That's correct. You could pick a different time also.
Or there was one where it was unlimited, indefinite. Would someone who has illegally made a change previous, I think maybe number four might be an example?
Probably is.
Would they be then permitted, if we were to adopt either a limited period of time or an indefinite, would they be permitted to, to seek relief under the new ordinance? Or have they already blown it by-
No, if you wanted that, that's why I mentioned, if you want that option-
Like an amnesty?
Right. The way I drafted it, it really doesn't read that way, because, but there is a, there's a way you can write that. It's sort of a-
They can just go pull the permit, can't they?
In permissal law, which then applies sort of in a, as opposed to ex post facto, you're creating something where you're going back and giving essentially amnesty to that. So that can be done. I, that's again, if you choose that, I'd have to work with Mr. Garcia to come up with better language, because I'm not happy with this covering that, because I think there'd be a lot of arguing back and forth as to whether or not-
Okay. So that's just a, that's a process, procedural issue, which would have to be worked through.
So if you, if you wanted that, we would make sure that the language reflected.
But council's policy, if that's where council went-
Where you're going.
Surely you could, you could take the steps that would implement that, that policy direction.
Mr. Higginson?
Yes, to better clarify, the answer to your question, Mr. Najarian, Madam Mayor, is that if you do not put specific language that gives amnesty to those signs, then they have technically violated the code, and in order to take advantage of the new policy, they would have to pay double fees, both for planning and building and safety permits, and then legalize the signs. Because we already have a policy of double fees for illegal signage or any, any kind of illegal code violation that they want to legalize.
So let me ask the mayor, if, these are the same photos that are in your packet, would you, for the benefit of everyone, would you like us to quickly go through those?
I don't think, I don't think we need to. I mean-
You've seen them.
Okay. I would like to go to the public, and then I'll come back to the council for questions and comments. Thank you. I have two cards, Margaret Hammond, followed by Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Your Honor. Mayor, Madam Mayor, City Council staff, and members of the audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. As you well know, I have always been passionate about the sign thing. I fought from the beginning to have the ordinance passed, and because, as I said before, Brand Boulevard was horrible. I don't know how many of you remember, but I remember it very well. And so I don't want to see the ordinance changed that would allow any further signs or enlarging of the signs. Now, I don't know whether this is just controlling the face of the signs, or the size of the signs, or what the changes would allow. But absolutely, I do not think that we should be going backward. We ought to maintain status quo in order to maintain the quality of life in our city as far as visual clutter. Now, you remember that we traded the one sign board, it just shows you, on the freeway, I don't remember quite whether it was KABC or WHO that we traded, the right for them to keep that sign in exchange for getting rid of a lot of other signs that Bobby Seffian negotiated, and we paid to get rid of those signs, I believe. I mean, he, he'd had a lot to do with it, he did. And so what I'm saying is, it is now a huge McDonald's sign up there. And I thought, well, hello. Before, it was not. It was something to do with loans at one time and various others. I don't appreciate you laughing and making faces at me. But at any rate, my feeling is, no matter what, that we should maintain the, what we have, how we have gotten our city to be considered a beautiful city. And the other thing is, the sandwich boards that are up all around the city, I went up on Sunday morning on the corner in Kenneth Village, there were four, four sandwich boards on the corner of Grandview and Mountain, or whatever, the street that crosses there at Kenneth Village. Now, I don't think that's necessary. I think that is absolutely clutter, and I don't think they should be allowed. To just park them any old place they want, I think they were, I think, real estate signs, to tell you the truth. So I definitely feel that we ought to be very cautious about making changes that will allow any further enlarging or additions of signs in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I wasn't laughing at you, Margaret. I was just trying to clarify that statement, that Bob Yusefian negotiated all that stuff. We have a difference of opinion.
Okay. Mike Mohill, that's my last card.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, Friedman, and council members, and the viewing public. My name is Mike Mohill. I just joined an organization this afternoon called Glendale Beautiful. And I'm surprised this organization is not here tonight. But Margaret is the best spokesperson for that organization when it comes to the signs. She's a trooper, she's led the causes against Mr. Caruso, signs on Brand, Central, Kenneth Village. Advertisers, businesses say, we need the sign to advertise what we have. A friend of mine said, you know what? When you see a sign, a little old sign that says ninety-nine cent store, do people know what's inside that store? Do they need a McDonald's sign or KFC sign to say, we're a ninety-nine cent store? I don't think so. Let's keep beautiful, let's keep Glendale beautiful, not honky-tonk like Hollywood Boulevard used to be, if I recall. Margaret has the right feeling. She loves our city. She wants our city to be clean and beautiful. Signs are nothing but clutter. If a merchant thinks he's got a good product, he'll sell itself. You know, garbage in, garbage out. Merchants can't say, I need a sign to, to get my merchandise out. No. Ever heard the word called word-of-mouth marketing or sales? I was in sales for twenty-seven years. I never had a sign. But people knew who Mike Mohill was, that he was a nice guy, he gave great service, had good product, even had expensive products, but they bought from, from me because they liked me. They say I need signs, big signs, I need to clutter the sidewalks of Brand Boulevard, or Central, or Grandview. I don't think so. Everybody wants a sign. Here's my sign, you know, keep Glendale beautiful without the signs. Thank you.
Thank you. That's my last card. Mr. Weaver?
I'll make mine simple and easy. As everybody in this room knows, I've lived in Glendale longer than anybody in this room. I think the city has become more beautiful over the decades. We've taken care of a lot of the garbage, whatever, on walls, et cetera, that we've had, and we beautified it with trees, et cetera. There's always improvements that can be made. I do know that today is hard economic times, and every little bit of help that a merchant can get in signage, other than putting those horses on the, on the street, which I don't approve of, which were on the sidewalk, these signs have been there. There hasn't been one single complaint that I've ever heard on these signs, not by, being stopped by anybody, not by an email, not by a letter, nothing. Nobody has objected. I fully believe they ought to be removed. But I'm not going to say today, not in these times. Is there advantage to the merchant today with them there that have them? Maybe, maybe not. What I'd like to do is leave them there, put the amnesty factor on, allow any of these signs to be able to change the face without penalty, but put in a sunset clause like five years. Tell all those that own those signs, you've got five years to get them removed. Five years, the council's gonna sit here and face the same decision. If the economy hasn't turned around in five years, we really have a problem in this country. And in better times, you can say, yes, they're coming down, you were told five years ago, you were gonna take them down, now's the time. So they could either figure out a way to do it in the five years, or face the consequences at the end of five years. Right now, I'm not interested in removing any of the signs. As far as vacant signs, why not? Merchants come and go, let them change those boards, and rather than leaving a blank board sitting up there. That's where I'm at.
Mr. Mnuchin?
Well, you can go first if you'd like. Yeah. Well, I disagree. Let me read from the report and recommendation, approximately sixty non-conforming accessory signs existed for at least twenty-five years. So the businesses, the property owners, et cetera, had twenty-five years to comply. Goes on to say, this is considerably longer than the ten-year period established in the nineteen seventies for removal of non-conforming signs. In other words, in the nineteen seventies, we were talking about removing these signs. I think it's time to move on. By the way, I counted fifteen signs that are really national chains. McDonald's, Seven-Eleven, Young Donuts, Seven-Eleven, Pets or Us, Carl's Jr., Jack-in-the-Box, KFC, et cetera. When these companies go into cities in California for sure, and I assume it's probably true in other states, when they go into other municipalities, they have to, they have to agree not to put these types of pole signs up. They actually use monument signs, et cetera. So now for the other companies that are more sort of local type of companies, all I can say is, it's not fair to the businesses that did comply, that someone else have a sign, a pole sign, a, another type of sign. I mean, I just think it's time to, to move on. Glen Oaks, Honolulu, some of the streets where these businesses are located, I don't think they're gonna particularly lose business. It will be, certainly, it will cost some money to eventually begin to pull them downs, down, but I think overall, it's gonna add to the attractiveness of their particular location. Monument signs are very nice, they're kind of at eye level, and I think that works quite well. So my first choice is to just have the ordinance stand, and, and that's it. Have the city do whatever needs to, whatever needs to be done.
Yes. Well, I'm neither here nor there. What I, what I generally object to is ordinances that the city passes without taking into consideration how they're affecting the people who are bound by those ordinances. I just, I do agree in terms of the state, state of economy, that we shouldn't be, while we're trying to encourage businesses to come to Glendale, we are oppressing, in my opinion, the businesses that we currently have here. In the state of economy, we should not be implementing any ordinances that is gonna cause these businesses to incur more expenditures, therefore maybe laying off more, more of their workforce. I don't think that's prudent at this time. And I think if these signs have been there for twenty-five years, why, why now? Why, why do we have to go and tell them, well, you know, it's been there twenty-five years, that's long enough, so now take it down? It could be, one of these businesses could be a business that started yesterday, and now they're gonna incur the cost of taking down the signs. They might have, they might have put up the sign with permits, and they're the sign company that they hired, that they could have pulled the permits. And now, a couple of months later, now because the city council and the Planning Commission brought this item in front of, and the staff brought this item in front of the city council, now they have to incur the cost of removing these signs and, and basically losing the money that they spent on these signs. I agree in terms of not having any new signs, such as these pop up in the community. And if these signs are taken down, I do agree that they should not be put up again in a similar manner, but they should be according to our current ordinances. But I don't see any problem with having these signs continue the way they are. And if people, and if businesses change, as they in the normal course of the economy they do, they should be allowed to change the faces, of course, with permits and the fees paid, on these signs. In terms of a sunset clause, I just don't agree, again, whether the economy is good or bad, I don't think we should be imposing that on the businesses. We could give them incentives to remove these signs, and I don't know what form those incentives would take. Maybe it would be in terms of, if you take the sign down, we will not charge you for the processes that you have to go through at the city to take, to put up a sign that is different and in conformity with what we have now. But to ask them to remove the sign and then pay for the processes that they have to go through to put up a new sign is just, I think it's just too much government bureaucracy at this point. So that's where I stand. Just keep the signs and have them change the faces if necessary, and as they take them down, just not allow them to put it up again.
Mr. Najarian?
Thank you.
Well, the first thing I would like to say is, I did have a sidebar with Mr. Garcia. I feel very ill at ease discussing this issue. I, just going through this list, I have identified several of these property owners who are campaign contributors to me. This is a problem, I think. This is something that we wanted to weed out. This is exactly the type of thing that, that I think causes a problem. I'm gonna turn to Mr. Garcia in just a moment, who gave me an opinion that was different than my, my gut reaction, but, I mean, I can, I don't want to identify them, but I can tell you that if I were to make a decision on this, and were it later to be revealed that, aha, you voted one way or the other on this person's property, and here's his sign, he gets to keep it, and let's go through, and you got some pretty good campaign contributions from him and him and that company, I think it would leave a very bad impression and would certainly add to the perception of, of improprieties. And there, there was no list included, and Mr. Garcia, I know, would like to address that issue, if you wouldn't mind. issue, if you wouldn't mind.
Absolutely, Madam Mayor, members of council. The campaign finance ordinance addresses applications for entitlement, and that's very specifically defined to a land use application related to a specific piece of property, whether it be a variance or a condition use permit. It does affect zoning, but those are site-specific zoning change requests, or specific plan requests, or general plan requests, specific to a particular property. It doesn't apply to an ordinance such as this, which is citywide in its application, even though it may have effect on a limited or finite number of properties. So I guess the technical legal answer is that the ordinance doesn't apply to this particular ordinance. And I would also add that, just in the issue of how the ordinance affects the finite number of properties, but you're not being asked to rule on these signs, but not these, to give a clear policy direction on a particular guideline, whether you're going to permit them to change the sign face forever, or for a certain period, and to provide amnesty for them, but not based on where they're located or who the property owner is, but on specific characteristics of the sign. So that's sort of the, in a nutshell, how the campaign finance ordinance, in my view, doesn't apply to this particular case.
And I just want my colleagues to know that I absolutely respect your opinion, and have no question with your interpretation of the current law, but, I mean, come on, guys. Wouldn't you think, if I went to bat for one of these signs, and later you saw, Madam Njerian, you got all this money from Popeye's Chicken, you're going to say, you're a, you know, you're a thief, you're a this, you're a that. So I have a, I personally, you know, maybe I'm setting a different bar than where council went, but I have a problem, an honest problem dealing and voting on this issue, when I, there are several signs here, and I don't know if they're illegal, or they're still legal, non-conforming, but, I mean, it's a problem, I see. And I wish I had known about this earlier. Unfortunately, I didn't get the report till I was, anyway, I was away this weekend, but I just want to state that and withhold my opinion. I'm going to decide if I'm even going to weigh in on this at all.
I think you're making a very good point. I looked through all of the sign and businesses. I don't think anyone, you know, has made any campaign contributions in the past, although I've certainly patronized some of these businesses.
Yeah, I've been at McDonald's.
Cafe Bravo, Cafe Bravo especially. And that's the kind of place that doesn't need a sign. The kebab there is so good that they have a built-in clientele. But seriously, you know, I don't, but I think you're making a very good point, Mr. Njerian.
Well, look, guys, I understand the point, and I respect Mr. Njerian for bringing that up. But if we're not going to have publicly financed campaigns, we will make decisions, week in and week out, that affect people that gave us money. I voted for the historic district on Royal Canyon. Several people on Royal Canyon gave me money. I vote routinely on zoning issues that affect single-family properties, that affect businesses, that affect lots of people who gave all of us money. I think that we drew a line that made a lot of sense. But if we're going to say, we can't vote on anything that might affect someone that gave us money.
It's everything.
That's pretty much everything out there, unless you financed your campaign yourself. If we want to talk about publicly financed campaigns, I don't think the city has the money for it. I would be completely in support of that, take all the private money out of it. Other cities have tried that, you know, there's a lot of big issues involved in that, that come into play, but I just don't know where you draw that line. I appreciate, and I very much respect, the inclination, but if I had to think about, like I said, every single type of person, or every business or person that may have given me money, it'd be really hard to make any decisions around here at all, because everything we do affects someone, negatively or positively. So in terms of the signs, just getting back to the issue at hand, I'm very torn, because on the one hand, I feel like this is a terrible time to ask businesses to do anything that costs them money. I think that for some of these businesses, I'm not worried about McDonald's Kentucky Fried Chicken, they can do it. And if we could pass an ordinance that just forced them to do it somehow, I'd be for that. But for our small businesses and our little guys, this is going to be really tough on them. However, I have less sympathy for the people who replaced their signs in the last several years without permit, because they knew they were doing it without a permit. I don't believe that these businesses didn't know that they needed a permit to change these very large signs. So to me, that's problematic, and I think at the very least, we should make them get these signs permitted, if we're to allow them. They should have to pay those extra fees, because they did something wrong, and they should have to have building and safety, be sure that the signs are safe, and they should have to go through whatever design review process we put everybody else through, because to me, it's parody. You know, the guy down the block does it, everybody should have to do it. I mean, you know, but, in terms of parody, what also worries me is that there are many businesses that did replace their signs because of this ordinance. And I don't want the message to the community to be, you know what, if there's an ordinance, if you wait long enough, you break the law long enough, eventually, we're going to forgive you. Which to me is what this is feeling a little bit like, especially, particularly for the businesses that did change signs and had the opportunity to make a new sign. So I'm really torn, because on the one hand, I feel like it's kind of not fair to let these people keep the signs at this point, when everybody else took theirs down. But I also look at some of these businesses, and they're local, small businesses, and they're just trying to get by, and do I really want to come down and say to them, by the way, that sign you've had now for six years, you're going to have to take it down, it's going to cost you $2,000 to remove it, and another $1,000 or $2,000 to put up a new sign? I don't really want to do that either. So I don't know exactly what the compromise is, and I feel very, very torn about this. I don't know if there's a way of looking at these on a case-by-case basis, as they come in for permitting. I'm sure that it would be considered completely unfair to just pick out the chains and force them to do it and nobody else. I'm getting nods, yes, you can't do that. But in a perfect world, I think we could do something like that. So I really don't know at this point, you know, what direction I'm going. I totally understand Mr. Quintero's point, I think it's been a long time, they've had 25 years to change these signs, they do look bad compared to the signs that we permit, most of them, not all of them. I think Cafe Bravo is actually kind of a cool sign, but a lot of them don't. One other thing, you know, again about parody, some of these signs, it's interesting, there's strip malls where there's maybe six businesses, but one of them has a monument sign, and the other ones can't, because of the ordinance. Not really fair either. So I'm still open to being swayed in either direction.
Question?
Question from the city attorney, actually. I see a sign for a religious headquarters on here. What is the law in terms of separation of church and state on this matter? Because I do remember the issue of the Armenian Apostolic Church on Central, and there was, and I was on the other side of this diocese, fighting to have our symbol on the church at that time. And we did prevail because of the freedom of speech for the churches and the separation of church and state at that time. And I do see a religious location sign on here as well.
Right. Councilmember Menucha, the city can apply generally applicable laws, including zoning ordinances, to different types of uses, including religious uses. We probably couldn't require them to change anything that's specific to that particular church's trademark or logo, and, but if they otherwise have to comply with all the rules that apply to everybody else.
Okay. Do we know, do we know how many businesses over the past 25 years changed their sign and took their signs down? I know one, one on Central, I know they took it down, but I know why. I'm just curious to know if anyone knows how many signs were taken down because of this ordinance? Maybe not in 1970s, but now.
I'd be curious about going back, because even if it was 30 years ago, that's...
You know, I think, I was just checking with Mr. Kraus, because the amortization period, which was the initial period, from 73 to 83, Glendale actually set the standard for being able, I remember I used to work for another city, and I researched the city that has been most effective, Glendale kept popping up. Glendale had been the most effective city in actually moving on and removing the signs. So a lot, hundreds and hundreds of businesses did actually take them down. And since just the time that I've been here, which has been past 2000, I've been here since 2003, I've seen a number of businesses come and apply for monument signs, which are allowed in the code. So I know a lot of businesses did comply. These ones have just been the leftovers.
I know one of the signs was taken down because there was an office building built instead of the business that was there, so it was a development issue, not necessarily taking down the sign itself. So there are other circumstances that have to be considered when we talk about, they've taken down the signs over the past 10 years. I think there were North Glendale, probably, a lot of development, and the Americana area, that we should not be considering, any signs that were taken down in the Americana, as, you know, businesses took them down, therefore, we should ask these people to take them down. They were taken down because the city basically acquired those properties and helped with the Americana trend development, so.
If I may, Madam Mayor, because of what I'm hearing, the kind of, I'm hearing between and betwixt, and an interest, maybe not by every council member, but by some, to find some sort of a compromise solution that does not necessarily reward, not...
Illegal ones.
Illegal ones, and will not necessarily put the businesses at stake. I was having a sidebar conversation with the city attorney to see if there would be a process that we could introduce for whatever number of years you would like, that we would allow the businesses to come and change the sign face for X number of years, at the same time, they sign an agreement that by a particular date, they will take down the sign, and they will come and apply to, for a sign that's consistent with the zoning code. That way, it's more like a contract, and at the same time, a permit for temporary period. I don't know exactly how to devise this, and Mr. Garcia said, we could probably look at that, but we'd have to think about how to do it. If that would be something you would like us to explore, you could give us direction to come back and propose something to you within the next couple of weeks.
I have a question, and I meant to ask this earlier, and I forgot, because I'm not an owner of a business like this. Are these signs replaced by the tenant, which are these businesses generally, or by the owner, the property owner of the building?
It could be both. Usually, it's the tenants who design it, sometimes...
Usually, it's the tenant.
It's the tenant. Sometimes the tenants pay for this, sometimes the owners have an agreement to do this for the tenants.
Oh, but I think that, hold on a minute, that's not necessarily the case, for sure. The strip malls, where there's one, two, three, four, five, six businesses, yeah, the property owner is going to be the one that's going to do that.
Pay for, right, the sign is there, they pay.
Others would be a bit different, if it's one person, or one company, or business occupying. Here's another one, one, two, three, four, five, six different storefronts. So there, the property owner would do it.
Could I ask a question? By IHOP, the big sign there, is that a monument sign, which we call a monument sign, right on Glendale Avenue?
The IHOP sign you're talking about?
Where you go in, is it Bonds Inn there, and you have IHOP, Swains, right before the freeway. It's huge. Is that a monument, what you call a monument sign?
Councilman Weaver, no, that's a ground sign. A monument sign or a pole sign, they're both forms of ground signs. In the code, we just use the term ground sign. So it could be a low freestanding sign as a ground sign, or one that's 50 feet high as a ground sign. The one you're talking about is one of the, probably only two examples in the city that are shopping center ground signs. So even that's in the C2 zone, because it qualifies under the special provision in the sign ordinance for shopping center that has four acres and 10 businesses, they get something that's 50 feet high. So that, in one sense, meets the code, but it also has a variance for projecting over the right-of-way due to some dedication. So notwithstanding the right-of-way issue, that's actually a conforming shopping center ground sign.
Son of a gun.
If they didn't have four acres or 10 businesses, they could only be, what is it, 75 square feet, eight feet high.
Okay.
Any feelings for or against the compromise proposed by Mr. Higani?
Why don't we give direction?
I don't think I'm going to win this vote, so...
I'm not in favor of signing contracts.
Yeah, Mr. Higani can try to work something out.
We could also, since this is going back to Planning Commission, have it go back with our thoughts and see if they can come up with any other sorts of recommendations that might take some of these, all of these concerns into account.
Why not?
I think we have managed to explain to the city attorney that enough was covered in the Planning Commission, unless you would really like to direct us to take it back to the Planning Commission for more discussion, I think if you'd like to bypass that, we can do that.
Yeah, go for it.
One suggestion, you could continue to a date certain, so we wouldn't have to be noticed for maybe another four weeks, so we can come up, give us direction, though. We don't want to just go out there and...
Well, definitely it's going to have to come back, because there's some sort of new language that we're going to have to approve, not approving, I mean, unless we pick one of the other options, but so far, I've heard one yes to the compromise, one no to the compromise.
And just, if I could add...
And one perhaps recusal, I'm not sure.
What I have.
And I think what, in line with what Mr. Higani said, the contract language, so to speak, would be essentially a covenant, where the owner would just covenant to remove the sign within the period that the council prescribes as the period that you have to take it down. It wouldn't be a lengthy contract, they're pretty standard. We've used them in other contexts of our zoning code or specific plans, including the DSP. So that was, that's kind of the way it could be enforced, if that's the direction the council wants to go.
Mr. Menucha?
I would also like to have the city notify all these businesses that this is what we are planning on doing.
Yeah, it's done here tonight.
Yeah, I know, because they probably don't know what's coming.
We could do that.
Yeah, and I think, if we have 60 of them, it shouldn't be a problem either dropping off a flyer, telling them that, oh, by the way, this is going to cost you $10,000, here you go, congratulations, welcome to Glendale.
I do think more of them know about this than you might think. I've gotten correspondences, I'm sure not all of them, I'm sure not all of them, but a few of them, particularly the ones who have done this recently, and had code enforcement visit them, which there are several, they know. I had an, just sort of as a sidebar, I had an interesting conversation with a business who's new to the city, who rented the location, she said, because of the sign, but what's interesting was that the property owner said, oh, yeah, the sign, you can do whatever you want, there's no ordinances, you can put up whatever you want, so I think, you know, there's, some of these property owners might be, might have a little more responsibility for this than we think. Because I'm sure the property owner knew that that was a non-conforming sign.
Madam Mayor, did you read that we all ultimately agree the signs should come down? Whether it's today, tomorrow, or the future?
No, no, that, at one point in time, yeah. If it's down, I agree that it shouldn't come up again, right?
That's right. But we all agree on that point, those four of us that talk?
Like if an earthquake hits, and all the signs fall down, they should, they should be...
Well, we've given them 25 years, maybe we can give them another 25. Maybe that's the...
But the point is, we all agree, four of us, that they should come down someday, and not go back up again. That's a starting point for you.
Higani?
If I'm hearing correctly, the direction that I'm hearing from at least the number of council members who are talking is, you would like us to notify the properties, property owners that would be impacted by this.
And the businesses as well.
And the businesses that would be impacted by this.
As the mayor said, sometimes.
That you would like us to perhaps include a couple of options of compromise discussions. One would be a way that they could come, maintain the signs, and keep the, change the faces of the signs to reflect the current businesses, but through some mechanism, they would be required to remove the signs at a certain time and replace them legally with up-to-code signs, and then I hear a concern about it not being cost prohibitive. So if you would like us to also include some language that would not make this cost prohibitive, that would make it easier for people in terms of cost to comply, then you would, we could include that.
Yes, I think that we should have some sort of an incentive, where if they're going to replace these signs, that they get some sort of break on whatever the fee is that we would normally charge them, because it's going to be an expensive capital expense for them. So if we can do something about fee structure, I would love to see that. And maybe, maybe we do that within a certain period of time, to incentivize them to replace the signs sooner rather than later. And I will stress again, though, that they all must be permitted. If there are any of these signs that have been changed without permit, they must go back and go through the correct process to get those signs permitted.
I agree.
And that may, that may actually push some of them to replace with a newer sign, with a conforming sign, if we give them a break on the fees for the conforming sign.
So then, I think we have enough direction from you. If you'd like us, we'll take it off calendar. If you'd like us, we'll take it off calendar, we'll re-notice this, fully notice in a, in a future date that will not be too far away, and we will, we'll follow all of your directions, we'll give you at least two options.
Okay, so just, so just to be clear, if you have a sign that you've changed, that's been changed, that you haven't permitted, because you probably couldn't permit it because it's not allowed, it will cost you, whatever it costs you when you permit something, double or, what is it, double or triple?
It's double. We have a process that actually, when we discover that non-conforming changes have been made, we give a notice to people that they have 30 days to apply, or else we will give them a citation, which will then start the process of double fees.
Turn their property over to the receiver.
So they had the time, so, but if we give them an option of, if they replace the sign and they conform with today's standards, they pay half the fee or something?
Well, they pay the one time, the fee, as opposed to the double fee.
But I'm saying, maybe we can even give them some sort of a break to really try to push, encourage people to replace these signs.
Will do.
And since you're, since you're going to have to contact all the landlords and all the tenants, then you can give us the list, all the names of those people, since you're going to have to do it anyhow.
Well, in all honesty, what we will probably do, we will look at the zones where these are located at, and we will just do a mass mailing to those property owners and the businesses based on zip codes. That's, which is a most effective way to reach out.
I would appreciate, not just for myself, but for my colleagues as well, having a list of these, especially the ones, these 50 or 60 that we have the photos of, just so we're clear. And I may be mistaken, but I'm pretty darn sure I'm not mistaken.
To the extent we can, we will provide that for you.
Okay, so any last comments before we move on?
Move.
Okay, moving on. Next item, please.
Next item, with the public hearing being closed, is oral communications. This is a five-minute portion discussion, is limited items, not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. And same manager, Mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you, I have three cards. Mike Mohill to be followed by Hazel Catmull.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, council members, my name is Mike Mohill. I didn't want to get personal, Mayor Friedman, on the cancer issue, but when I saw the advertisement for the organization you were involved with, that you were concerned with cancer and being a cancer survivor, then I remember my neighbor who was hysterical about these meters, the first time I said to her, please talk with Councilman Menucha. I got a phone call the other day from another person, and I didn't know at the time, but he was the son of the woman who was hysterical. Would you like to talk with her and calm her nerves? Because she was the one that said to me, ma'am, that she didn't understand you as a cancer survivor, didn't understand where she was coming from, okay? The other point is, the World Health Organization had said that these, these meters are carcinogen. Do they know more than we know? Number two. Excuse me for my delay. Number two, Councilman Quintero discounted everything I said. He said, oh, Mohill, you don't know what you're talking about, and I talked about the smart meters. And I recall when Councilman Quintero would say to me, Mr. Mohill, during the, in the year 2007, eight, nine, and 10, he'd say, the economy is great, the sun will rise again tomorrow. And I kept telling him, and I kept coming here, and I said, look, Councilman, Councilman Quintero, look in today's paper, September the 14th, income slides to 1996 levels, medium household earnings fall for the third year, census says. Headline news, September the 2nd, 2011, jobless rates expected to stay high, unemployment will be near 9% through 2012. Councilman Quintero, if this fails and people get sick, I'll have them all knocking on your door. Thank you. Now, Councilman Nigerian, you made a comment that the money was going to be transferred from the GWP, the General Fund, to pay for all the sporting events and so forth, correct? And I didn't know what I was talking about, so I'm asking the question, why doesn't, why didn't the GWP have $70 million in their bank account in the first place? Why did we need to go out, it was that important, why did we need to get a bond? Because you're going to have our children pay for these bonds. I recall, in 2011, there was about $250 million in the GWP reserve account to deal with stranded investments. Remember I spoke about that last week? Like contracts with different power plants? As the GWP was going through deregulation, since deregulation never went through, what happened to all that money? So let's talk about the financing of these smart meters. In 2006, there was a bond for $38 million. In 2008, there were two bonds for $110 million, and that was for infrastructure. And I keep asking the question, where is $400 million that the GWP has collected in the last several years? I know where it's gone to. Salaries and pensions, because my council members are more beholden to the city's unions than the Arg to the taxpayers who put you here in the first place. That's my complaint tonight. And we have an economy that keeps getting worse and worse, and you tax it, you increase our water rates, our electric rates, turn on your water, you want to tax the businesses, you tax, 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 businesses are leaving Glendale. Don Cuckoo, located right next to the Alex Theater, closed their doors recently. And we got Borders, and we got Circuit City, and restaurants and restaurants, and you want to keep taxing people, and you want the children of this society to pay for the decisions you have made on these bonds and on these smart meters. The smart meters, I'll repeat myself for the thundiest time, was never needed. It was only needed to get more money from the taxpayers in the first place. If you were prudent, and you were taking care of the company store, you would have never approved the smart meters in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card is Hazel Catmull, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening. My name is Hazel Catmull, Mayor and everybody else. One of the problems with the smart meters is, nobody discussed them with the people beforehand, the citizens, and so nobody knew what was going to happen. They were told that they were going to get a new meter. It's only after the fact that everybody decided they were no good. You have powers to find out, nobody answers the question about them. They all say, if somebody says, somebody says they're no good, somebody says they're great. You have the power to find out what is good about them, instead of just letting everybody be frightened, which they are. Their questions are not being answered. And unfortunately, they met with sneers a bit, too. We have the Historical Society, which is apparently an offshoot of the permit department, permits department. The rules we applied as to what color the residents can be painted, what windows can be changed, and it goes on. Are the people from the Historical Society being paid by the council, by the city to do this work? The city palms trees in the parkway, the homeowner is responsible for maintaining the tree, the health of the tree. When the roots impact the water pipes, the owner is responsible for the repairs. And you really are, to the center of the road, you're responsible. The pipes become yours, the pipes are yours, but the tree is still the city's, and we are expected to pay for their roots, plus water it. We're not allowed to count, to cut the tree or anything like that, because that's a finable offense. And, I think last but not least, there is no notification, the city is now inspecting the backyards to assess the number of trees that you have and the kind of trees. They will inform you if they need trimming. Up to date, they haven't asked for entrance into the house to have a look what goes on in there, but, you know, it's really becoming very invasive. There's a gentleman, a very polite gentleman, I may add, Mr. Starburg, who has said, I have to look at your trees. To say the least, I was a bit stunned, he's out there counting the trees, and right along the street, which I found rather surprising. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Margaret Hammond, my last card.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and city staff. Okay, my name is Margaret. First off, if I were to. Pardon?
I'm sorry, I didn't see the timer, it just went on. Sorry, I mean.
If I were to want to have signs put up around the city, I would love to see them put up signs advertising the bulky item phone number, 818-548-3916. I would definitely approve of that. And try to get the city clear of a lot of old mattresses, furniture, TVs, electronics all over town. So you can see, there are good reasons to have signs. The other thing that I really want to talk about are the pedestrians. Unbelievable. I mean, I've had at least three this week going along with cell phones and just walk off the curb. I mean, totally ignoring, whether you make a right turn or you're going through, I mean, I don't get it. And they'll run at the last minute on a red light, virtually. There needs to be some education, and some, I don't understand what they think, how the, a driver would possibly have a chance to stop. I mean, it scared me a couple of times. I don't know what you can say about them. And I know you're going to say, well, the driver should be aware. Well, you are, but you're looking at them, and they're going, and they're not in the right, but for some reason, they just don't seem to think they even have to turn their head. And I think that's really too bad. I would like to ask you, and I know I've asked before, about when will we get the lobby finished? I really think, like, when we had these people here from Korea, and the way our lobby looks, I think it's pretty tacky. And it's been a while, I think it's been a year, it's been a while since it was started. And I'm hoping, looking at Mr. Zern, and he's looking kind of whatever, but it really is awful. It, I really am embarrassed about it. And of course, the past mayor's portraits, including Mr. Weavers and some of your other people that were past mayors, still waiting for them to go back up somewhere in the building. That they should be recognized and acknowledged for the what, the time they have put in, the hours they put in, and so forth, and that they have, are away from their family and doing, and their businesses, that they give to the city in that way, which is a big, big donation to the city of their time and expertise. And then I, back to one more thing, the ceramic city seal, the beautiful one that used to be on the back wall there is gone. Where is it? It was a piece of art that was given to the city. I don't remember by whom or what city, but it was specially made, handmade for us. And it's disappeared. Where is it? And I thought it was a very beautiful, I mean, this one is great, but that colored one was beautiful, it really was. So I would like to see it somewhere and find out where it is, because I'd hate to see it lost in the veils of time or whatever. Now, addressing the thing about the signs, I had no idea. I thought everybody, what it was about was allowing people to have larger signs, or this, or that. I was rather surprised when there was talk about making the people take the signs down. I'm like, wow. I was not in that mindset at all. I was more or less just saying, don't put up any more signs, and don't put up bigger signs, or whatever. And of course, as I said, all these, whatever you call them, sandwich signs that are all over the streets hindering pedestrians and so forth. Anyway, thank you very much. And the other thing is, I don't know the Glendale Historical Society, that any member of the society that I know, and I've been 30 years a member on the board, than any of us have any, any to do with setting colors or signs or anything like that. I mean, and we're not paid in any way or receive any reimbursement, so I'm not sure where that came from, really. We did do the house tour, and it was a wonderful tour, the homes were exceptional, and the people, it came from Palis Fertis, from Simi Valley, you wouldn't believe how many miles, some of them almost 100 miles, to go on that tour, and were absolutely, said the most beautiful homes they had ever seen, and they came from areas where they have beautiful homes. Thank you.
You, Mr. Menucha?
Yes, Margaret, the tiles downstairs are going to be finished fall 2010. That's what the sign says downstairs. And, you know, that, the individual who came up and brought up the issue about the trees, there was a pastor here from, from the church, and I was going, you were going to look into that, that, do we know what happened with that?
That was a sewer line.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a sewer line. It was a sewer line, and.
Pipes, sewer lines, you know, they're pipes, aren't they?
Well, I can get you, I do owe you.
That's what you said last week.
We'll get that to you, I apologize.
Okay, but are we, are you talking to them regarding this issue? Because $10,000 to spend for a little church on, for our property is, and our tree is considerable.
We are talking to them, and we've gotten additional correspondence from their attorney, and one of my staff members is discussing with them, reviewing the matter again and discussing with them.
Thank you.
Mr. Weaver?
Margaret, that seal was in the room right behind us on the wall.
Yeah, is it, is it inside?
Yeah, I just went back to check it.
Oh, okay.
But I can't see.
Well, I can.
I think we should take that clock down and put it up there.
That's right, I agree.
I want to see the time, I want to see how long we're sitting here.
Okay, we can't, we can't have conversation back and forth, sorry.
Sure we can. I just want to correct the record. Mr. Mohill is inaccurate. I didn't say the economy was great in that particular budget session. In fact, probably a year to 18 months, I could just sense that we were in a total bubble in terms of housing in this country as I went to different cities across the US. Mr. Mohill, if I remember correctly, was a bit hysterical that morning, and that's what caused me to say that the sun would rise again. He seemed particularly agitated, and guess what, the sun did rise, and yeah, the economy is flat, and that's putting it mildly, we're in a tremendous recession. But I can't say that I blame the employees of the city of Glendale. They didn't cause it, they didn't contribute to it. And anyway, it's the ongoing discussion with Mr. Mohill that never ends. Just a couple of other comments. Borders has went in bankruptcy, Circuit City did too, so I don't think that really falls on the city of Glendale. Then I have to research the World, World Health Organization, because I assume they're talking about certain types of rays, or certain types of communication. I don't think they're specifically signaling out smart meters. I don't think that's exactly true.
Will you adjourn?
Can't I say anything first?
I'm not supposed to, but go ahead.
I'm not supposed to?
Not, not in oral communications, it's for the people to give comments on items they want taken care of, for staff to take notes.
I can respond to the public, just like other people.
No, no, when I got elected in 97, we did not. And we didn't for at least four years or more. Now, we do.
Well, in 2011, we do respond.
2012 might be different.
2011, when people come here and sit for hours, we can give them a response if we want. I just am a little bit worried about Ms. Catmull's experience of somebody asking to go into the backyard, because as far as I know, we do not do that, correct? We do not do that, but it's possible that someone was impersonating a city employee.
There may be a cir.
Well, it, yeah, you know what, we'll, we'll find out, because I'm glad to hear that they were driving a city truck, because I know that people have impersonated gas company people, they've, they've impersonated all kinds of people. So I just wanted to be sure about that. But we can find out. Okay, we can find out, you know, there's, there are reasons why people sometimes.
For example, utilities may need to go in your backyard and see whether trees are getting into the lines, but we do not routinely inspect people's trees in their backyards. We just don't.
Okay, so I just wanted to, to make sure that it wasn't an imposter. And I'll just echo what Mr. Quintero said, I really don't think that the World Health Organization has looked at smart meters. If you have that data, I'd love to see it. If you have that data, I'd love to see it. Interesting, what is a Class II carcinogenic? Because I've seen the list. Caffeine is on that list, pickles are on that list, there's a lot of pickles are on that list as a Class II carcinogenic. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that are, that are on that list. But there is a lot of research out there about this type of electromagnetic radiation. There's information that's on the city's website, and I would suggest that anyone's interested, look at the GWP website, and, and look at those sources. So, I mean, I've reviewed a lot of the science, and I am not comfortable with cell phones particularly, but I am comfortable with smart meters. It's a lot less radiation, and it's a lot further away from your brain. So people need to keep these things in context. We're basically talking about the same type of power, same type of electromagnetic radiation, which is not radiation like nuclear radiation from a power plant, by the way, that comes from a cellular modem, which you're sitting in right now in this room, you know, wireless internet, it's the same type of radiation. This is not anything new, more powerful, anything like that. So I guess we'll keep saying this week after week, but I do think people should go look at the GWP website, the links they provide, and make your own, you know, evaluation. So those are my comments. Sorry, Mr. Weaver wasn't around to hear them.
The comment made a question, if I may answer that. The Glendale Historical Society is not under the city's payroll, it's a community, or grassroots community organization, and the Historic Preservation Commission is a group of volunteers appointed by the city council to, to run the commission, and they're not on payroll either. To the extent that staff implements the, the issues of design, those are the policies that the city council has set in the zoning code, and to the level of authority that staff has been given, that's all.
Thank you.
Will we adjourn?
Mr. Weaver?
We are adjourned.
Oh, Mr. Weaver. I missed it. He didn't even say goodbye.